Good evening, everybody. It's now six o'clock. We're about to start the city council meeting for the city of Bonny Lake, August 22nd. First thing we do is salute the flag. So if everybody could stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I have to say it's very nice to see every seat filled up here. I don't remember the last time I've seen that. All right, Madam Clerk, if it entails tire you too much, please call the roll.
Mayor McCullough.
I'm here.
Deputy Mayor Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Here.
Councilmember Evan.
Here.
Councilmember Frolletin.
Here.
Councilmember McLymon.
Present.
Councilmember Swatman.
Present.
And Councilmember Watson.
Here.
All right, doesn't look like we have any agenda modifications. We do have a couple of presentations. The first will be from MRAC, and the floor is yours, Deputy Mayor.
Well, I'll turn it over to Doug down there with MRAC.
Hi, good evening. Yeah, I should be on too. That was still after. Let's see, just want to give you an update, bit of an update, and also thank anybody that was involved in the draft.
Is there a way the mic could get adjusted? It's a little hard to hear.
Well, why don't you piece away?
Sorry. It's a little hard of hearing over here.
Yeah, no, it's probably good otherwise.
You can yank it out of there.
Incoming. There you go.
Raise it a couple feet.
Does it go that high?
Oh, hot mic. It's a hot mic!
Yeah. Oh. So yeah, just thank you very much, anybody, everybody that participated in that. It was great to get the draft and take a look at it and see what I was getting myself into. A little bit surprised by some of it, not really, just because it's something I'm unfamiliar with, but everything looks like it's great. I know I talked to Scott about it, Scott and all about it, and he was just as excited as I was. So he's looking forward to that time when we can get it out there. So yeah, big thank you to everybody involved. I sent an email, I don't know if everybody got a copy of that, I don't want to bore you with just kind of re-over everything, I don't think that makes sense, but I just wanted to say we're ready. We're ready to get playing, it might be mud soon, that's okay, but the planning has been incredible. One of the things I mentioned here is we had a chance to talk to Chris Lear, he was really helpful. That guy just has a plan, and even though I think I know what I'm doing, Scott and all thinks he knows what he's doing, he sat for three hours in less than here. He's never had a chance to, so I don't think you need to mind us about who's listening, he just goes for it. So that was extremely helpful, he just knows how to get earth ready. So that was a big part of what we did. We have some dates I'll point to in there, that we're looking at some grants and other opportunities to find money, to be able to fund the ideas. And let's see, we continue to meet with people in the community, anybody and everybody that we can talk to, usually, sure, there's no difference between you guys, you know, one meeting leads, three, four, five, four, and then follow-up ones with other people. So that's been great. Everybody's got some feedback, some ideas, experiences, things that they did that worked and did well, and we're learning from all of those, trying to take some ideas as soon as we can. Everyone seems to be excited about what we're doing, the potential for what we might be able to build and do, and that's both with the Reed property and with the potential for Parks and Rec. At least from what the feedback we're getting is, you know, there's some hesitation, but not the same as what we saw in June or in April. Everybody seems to be ready to go. We'd love to just start working with people on that side. I've had three people, and this wasn't something I asked of the club, two people got a hold of me in our club, on our soccer club, and said, hey, how can we help, what can we do? So we'd love to be able to have that opportunity just to show you what we are capable of and help out, because we realized that, you know, with the interlocal agreement and some uncertainty when that was going to get done, when it was going to get finished, that there might be an opportunity for us to be able to lean in and help out. There seem to be some understaffing issues there, understandable, resources sometimes leave us at the most opportunity, through opportunity, but being able to help out provides assistance, coaching, programming, anything you can come up with. And then, one of the things in the interview that stood out to me is updating on the council. And how would you like me to do that? Just come to meetings, essentially, give feedback to people, how I can do that? Send an email, vote? But that's ours appointment. Yeah, I think, I think we could do it by email. I would like to see somebody come back and talk to us, and poll, either in a council workshop, or a council meeting, on some kind of ongoing basis, so we are, everybody can get the same information at the same time. The idea of it is good, and I don't know what that looks like, essentially, it could be once a month, or once every couple months, I want to take up the whole of our, if it either, because there's other things to do. Maybe every other month would be a good poll. Excuse me. Yeah. Why would we say every other month? Every other month, okay. That sounds great. Yeah, I know sometimes when I, I think I said it, but I didn't, and I don't know if it's a genetic thing, or biology thing, or what, but it seems to be as time's gone on, I think I said that. No, you didn't. You have to say it. So. It's an age thing. So it's not going to get better. All right. And then last, any questions for me? I think to open myself up, that was what I'm doing. Any questions?
Yeah. So I'm just trying to kind of piece together in my mind, so will this be pretty much a public park, but they're also going to put courts there, or is this going to be something that people are going to have to pay to go play there, if there aren't any games, you know, is this going to be open to the public?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question, and the answer is, sadly, I don't know yet, but we're trying everything. We've scheduled a meeting with the Savers Reed Organization, their chair of all of the elders, they're putting in 26, we'll be able to buy 2026, which is very familiar with the Reed organization and the directors. So we have a meeting with one of them, and somebody from our community, actually, the more than everyone's retired professional soccer player, and they're looking at different cities to put some of these many pitches in that are free. We can't afford the deals with those, they can't program anything, can't rent it out, can't pull it back and ask for it, just play. So we love that concept, if we can get something like that in our community, we'd love to see it happen. So my understanding is that meeting is supposed to happen in August, but there's some vacation in there, so they're trying to work throughout. You know, I met Lamar about it specifically, you know, he's trying, he lives in his community, he'd love to see it as much as anybody else. But they put in, I think they're doing seven this year, 2023, they put in four of those seven, and then they're already at 16, so by 2026, I think they have those people lined out where they're going to put them, but they're not stopping at 26, and that's the World Cup. They're trying to get as many as they can, we've seen that with 104. So they put in, it's free, they build it, it's gorgeous, the first one I went in was at right up by the dels, yes and terros, and it's pretty amazing, just a big concrete palace, very much, a lot of artwork, seven tribes, very important, and just a mini there, so it's smaller, I totally feel, just for open play, next term, so main, low mains, so that's one of the, one of the options we've looked at. We're trying to have as much open space, or at least thinking about bike trails, we want to recognize the land up there, it's history with the Reed property, as well as the tribes, the Wushe tribes up there, the Anindhus, so we want to create something where that's recognized, and we want the tribe as well, the bike path, we talked to the county a little about a parking lot and an access, or some kind of bike path up there, so that's something we're very interested in, and that would be, be structured. We want to keep the fields as low as we can, but we ought to be able to operate out there. So the turf that we put in, the fields, we're looking at a model where it would be a day-to-play facility, but we want to keep those costs low, and we want to try to raise as much money for grants and everything else. We have a lot of sports organizations that are very interested in partnering with us, because they see me as well, and that P model being a part of it as well, but not huge, you know, you know, one of the sports, I mentioned, sixty dollars a month, that's the difference. So what are the youth prices to be? We're going to try to work those out as soon as we can, but it's going to be a combination, is your question, we think, of space.
Well, that speaks to a serious question, I was wondering, officially, with the view of 20,000, the secret cultural resources here, have you been in contact with Michael Shute's kids?
Yes, we have, Scott and all have us.
Okay.
And so has Kathy, who's going to speak next, and Scott's coaches, and one of the girls on one of his teams is the Wushe, travel chief's dog, so he's talked to him several times about it, so we have multiple people that have talked to the Wushe tribe and had positive feedback. And Kathy's going to speak, that she actually had a conversation, and I just heard about them. So yeah, we're really excited about that, and that was something that was pointed out to us by Councilman Dave Morrell, and he right away told us that was a big thing to be aware of out there, and, you know, as you go out there, you can see the coastal parks all over the place, so really need to be able to look at that issue.
Thanks to your organization for working on this, pretty exciting project out there. Is there any concepts yet on which pieces of the Parks and Rec that are more than likely to be, you'd like to pick up? Because my understanding that, you know, Parks and Rec has a tremendous program, that has a lot of different services, and I suspect that some of them are really not something that your organization do.
Yeah, you know, that's, it's interesting, as we look at it, we see the list of services, and one of them that I printed off, there's a lot. So, you know, we want to be able to support any one of those, even if it's just need to partner, you know, I saw one of them, they brought the new jiu-jitsu, I don't know what they call them, but jiu-jitsu place, and, you know, I'm sure they want to be able to touch, I'm sure they want to be able to reach out to people, like the private organization, we feel like we might be very, in a better position to be able to approach them and say, hey, we'd love your help. So, you know, getting some expertise, maybe using Sony, and in return, you know, they have that access to some entry-level programs, so that's one of the options. Several dog trainers, I know that's kind of a company, you know, that's something that typically a soccer club, you know, wouldn't want, but at the same time, they have some pretty dogs out there running around, you know, so we would love to see a situation where dogs will be better behaved, drummers feel more comfortable. So, you know, dog training, any of the programs that are on, have looked at, you know, and somebody pointed out to me last week that the old lists of what Parks and Rec used to offer at times have been short, we like those, because we want to be able to do a lot, but we also want to be able to branch out and add other things. You know, pickleball's a big part of what we want to bring in.
With the feedback we've gotten from Toons and Taps, we need.
No, I blame them, like, court two doors down, you know, and that's what Kathy's here to talk about, and it's just such a, such a great sport, and, you know, just to be able to get people, and, you know, my, I hope that you can have parents drop off kids out there, and they look over and hear and see that pickleball thing, see people having fun, and still, you know, able to walk out with the club, and they go over and join, you know, they go over and sign up, and they want to be a part of it. So that way, the parents are active, the kids are active, everybody's having a good time, and that's something we really want to see. We want to cover it, want to do some nice things, so we can bring that support in, but that's definitely one of those. Just be playing, and just go about your day, not walk with a limp like after you play soccer, dress like. And so, yeah, that's a, that's a big part, and we're trying to do this.
Yeah, first of all, thank you for just, you know, for having these ideas, things like that, I know you are taking, achieving this, and so definitely understand that. I am curious, what is the potential number of fields that could be?
Well, with room to spare on, on sides of the field, just for soccer pitches, which were for lacrosse, football, football, as well, it's three acres, three acres per field, so because of the buildings and locations out there, and some of the hard services that are there, we're going to have to really look thicker, we're going to get through some blackberry bushes, and I've tried, and I think they may have a larger machine.
Yeah.
Or a machine, so, you know, trying to understand what's out there, and see what's happening, we think that we'll be able to get minimum of full-size pitches on there, want to look at doing some mini pitches, more training areas, training facilities, so that we're not putting. Happen, what happened here? I don't think, we are happy. I appreciate that, I didn't know what was happening, I'm moving around, okay, all right, my old job, I get a little nervous. Alarm, so I'm, so that's what we're hopeful for, is at least three.
Three to touch.
Also want to look into. Also being a logman, all with some of those in motion. There's a similar facility in Spokane called The Hub, they have 26 acres, currently they have a six-acre indoor facility with a lot of parking, and then they're adding to the 20 acres that are around them, and they're going to put two full-size football fields, four soccer fields, pickleball and tennis, so they have a lot of things spaced out there, and it's amazing. Somebody that knows what they're doing, what they can do with that, but that's flat land in Spokane, that's, you know, it's just, all they have to do is pretty much get the tunnel, it's going to change. So we have a literally different scenario out there than we have here, for sure. But yeah, I can show you, Bill, just running out there, he and I have talked a week or so, in front of my, just to win the conversation, introduce me, so he shared with me the schematic that you have, I can show that, I mean, it's pretty easy, or I can sit up here, it's great to look at, you can literally, you know, when you look at it, wow, that's possible, so it's beautiful what they've done, and I'm sure it costs them a fortune, but he was, yeah, no problem, he's been very helpful, so good partners, and a positive one, I'm sure. Yes. Yes. All right, oh, question, Brett?
Thank you so much for the presentation and the update earlier today. I got to ask, aside from getting any grants, this is, they're going to cost a fortune, what are the resources that you guys have available that are set aside, because you guys have to earn an ROI on this, and, you know, at some point, there's going to be a crossover point where it's not going to be worth it. Hopefully, you don't see that, but there, there will be at some point, you know, that, what are your resources outside of grants that you have set aside that you're willing to commit to this?
Well, ultimately, I've known Scott and all for 15 or more years, and there's a lot of times I'm like, I don't think that's going to work, Scott, and he just kind of laughs, and it works, he's just, he finds a way, and so I've kind of developed something, and he said it too, it's just, I bet on that, I bet on that guy half the time, and the other half that I don't, just choose not to bet, and he still gets it done. So I'm confident that he'll be able to find, he's a funny guy in this operation, he is going to be able to find that. I hope he was joking, but I'm sure he, but he, he told me a story about somebody who's trying to get the bike trail going, years ago, going to the bars at night, and would walk around with a soup can, collect money, I hope that wasn't an idea for me, but that just tells you, this is the conversation that we're having. So we're going to, we're going to shake people down if we can, you know, we're going to do the old-fashioned, hey, help out, you know, let's do this, that's great, we need it. We've looked at with the core facilities down in Qohang on Valley Avenue, and there's large family sign, that's great. We've looked at some of these other places, and what they've been able to accomplish, and we think that, you know, again, if you create an opportunity, people are going to, people are going to show up to the table, even if it's just with ideas on how to generate money, but we're looking heavily at grants, we haven't done that before, we've lost.
So we just finished our other field here in town, we, I met you there, we did our grand opening, I believe that was seven million, it was about seven, eight million? So now, that's obviously pretty well-built and done on public funds, so it's happy, you know, it's, it's got the excessive cost in there, but, I mean, are you guys estimating, this is going, at least 20 million is from what you're telling me?
Yeah, you know, the numbers.
Have that money committed?
I don't think we haven't committed yet, I think that we have some commitments, a great example of that is a conversation with, he was saying that, you know, if you guys were to go out and shop, it's going to cost you 200,000 dollars, just to get the thing done, research, your efforts to be able to start. Because I think, just by asking, and just by what I've been able to bring to these people for business, because I think we need it done for 50, 80,000. It's those types of efforts, I think, when, when people are willing to push, pull, do whatever they can to generate the interest, to generate the conversation, where people feel like this is something they want to become a part of, and then they give out a good, good will. They, we don't want anybody to lose money in this situation, but we are hoping for those type of good ones, where people are willing to do so more, and he was confident that that could happen. So, you know, he, he's believing in this, he was very interested to have a meeting with Kevin Morris, you know, I'm sure that he's, at some point, we're going to have those conversations with those, you know, big people in the communities that have the ability to see these projects, and everybody looks and goes, that's not possible, and then they build them, and he can just sit back in the lab. So between Scott and all, Chris Lear, anybody else in the community that wants to become involved with us, we'd love to get them in a conversation and see what we can do. We've met with Dave Morrell, the county, we've met with Eric Robertson for the state, there's some potential there for some funds that we're going to ask for, between those and the grants, I think it's taken us started. The return on investment, I think, at some point, we're going to, you know, have to sit down and have those hard conversations, but right now, we're just meshing with that, and it is what we're doing, and we're seeing some big commitments. Scott, you know, I don't know what he's going to do with this, but I know that he's very interested in it. So usually, when I see that level of interest from him, he's going to find a way to make it happen, and I'm confident in that. I appreciate your question, I have, I have this very similar question, but then I just go out and try one more.
You're asking us to commit public funds towards this enterprise, and, you know, you're, you're expecting or hoping for a contract by, by end of November, and should that come back, I'm just letting you know now, I, I don't care how you start, I care how you finish. We, we start a lot of things around here that we don't finish, or we, we start a project and we don't know, you know, we're, we're working on a 20-year trail right now that we still don't know how we're going to fund. I just don't want to commit public funds to that without seeing, I mean, energy and positivity, that's all great stuff, but what it comes down to is money in the bank and hitting milestones, and so that's, I'm just letting you know now what my expectations are, and we see another presentation, you know, for, for this, that I want to see the meat and potatoes of it, that, you know, we're going to make this commitment, that it's all the way through and has that funding source without, without any risk.
Yeah, I appreciate that very much, yeah, I mean, as a taxpayer here, I don't want to give my money away, so, you know, that's, that's a very important thing, we'll be sure to get those questions answered. Right now, I'm just saying that we're very few of us.
Oh, yeah.
And, but we're going to have those answers, and I don't think it's going to be, that's something that Scott and I, you're looking at the business plan, you know, I got to page, oh, page 17, I think it was page 28, and so I got to the financial part, and I called him, I said, hey, I'm going to need your help, and he and Sam, Vice President, they're going to look at it, and I've got a creative mind, I'm not the one that's going to crush the numbers, so when he gets a, ah, on the 28, and he gets a good look at that, then I think that, you know, we're going to, we're going to really be able to push forward on that, get some administrative advice, I'm going to think it.
How are the people who come in October for our next, our next get together?
Absolutely, he loves to be invited and stuff, yeah, I'll be absolutely. What, so what date will that be?
We, when?
Just an example, if we're going to be there every couple of months, I imagine it'll be the second meeting in our. Okay.
Oh, okay, good, good.
Got it? I'll make sure, check in with, make sure that's all right. Okay, oh, I'm a flop.
Great question. I do, I am curious, do you know when there is going to be an estimated possibility, according to just this timeline, I'm looking at it, where, there is a lot, I do think that, again, I'm just guessing, but I know you were throwing out like a 20 million, you know, possibility.
Or five million if you private, that's three of those, plus pickleball and land development.
Yeah, yeah, and so, but I, but I know that because, you know, you're private, who knows, like, maybe there are just, you just have a little bit more ability for resources than a government entity, but, you know, do you know when you might have a new number like that for us, have an idea of how much it would, you know, how much funding it would be?
Right, you know, I, I think we'll know something by that meeting in October, without doubt, I know that's something that Scott wanted to have a discussion about.
Yeah.
And, and this sets a stage perfectly for Kathy, she's, she's got the answers, all that stuff, and it'll take a lot of, in a certain way, I want to rule what she has to say, but I'll, I'll address it with that, but I think now that we have a true understanding of the pushing things, we're just sharing this, and it has costs, thanks to it, and we're pretty confident with those costs, because it's something that was reasonable for, so, you know, I think that gives us an idea for the first things, what we're in for, and I think as we, as we look, and as this, well, now, you know, when they started that field, I'm sure there was a number, and that number just grew tremendously, so we want to be cognizant of taking those fatal approaches, and looking again, and looking again at those budgets, so, you know, we, we want to get this done quickly, and we want to work diligently on it, so we'll have those numbers for you, I appreciate you bringing it up, really important, some of them, but we'll have those for you in October.
I believe you segued Kathy a couple times, how about?
I did, I'm excited, I'm excited to get this stuff, all right, thank you guys. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members, my name is Kathy Delcris, and I am a former state representative from 31st Legislative District, and I am a self-professed pickleball addict, and I will tell you, I've known Scott Knoll since I was in the legislature and helped him on a couple of projects that were for his business, so we've known each other for quite a long time. My daughter actually started playing soccer for MRFC and ended up playing professional soccer in Spain, no, she wasn't in the World Cup or on that team, but she played for two years in Spain and returned about a year ago, so I will tell you that athletics takes kids all over the world, so kudos to the lives that MRFC has changed, including my own daughter's. I'm excited to be able to be a partner to MRAC. I was asked to be here today to talk about pickleball, to talk about my experience with public grants and private grants and funding projects. I would love to build a 10 to 12-court covered facility somewhere on public land. To answer one of the questions, I believe that if you build on public land, it should be open for public use. I also understand the economics of building facilities, and that takes a partnership. Pickleball players like myself and the thousands of others in this area that would come to pay to play and pay for memberships, to the tune of probably $600 a year, and you get 400 members, and pretty soon you can do the math, and you've got quite a bit of money that would fund a facility and maintain it annually, so there's just a number to start with. In my, in my life, I have applied for several different public grants and built fields. One of them was a peak school, they came up, a high school football field, applied for that grant, as well as a public grant through the WWRP estate, and also a Seahawks grant, that was a myriad of grants that came. That was a myriad of grants, a King County Youth Sports Athletic Facilities Grant. Again, a myriad of grants totaling about $2 million to upgrade and redo that field. I've also applied and received grants for playgrounds, all doable with establishing a nonprofit and building the facility. Lots of volunteers helped. Currently, I've raised about $426,000 for the purpose of building a facility. I would like to build that somewhere on public ground, public ground. That's between cash and in-kind donations. So I just wanted to be here as an example to a partner, to M.R.A.C. that is coming to the table with resources and the ability to follow through on a project. I think that this understanding, and I would agree with you with Councilmember Evans, that we see projects to the end. I will tell you, I've never personally applied for a grant that I didn't get or I didn't complete. So those have all been completed. We are ready to move forward and sign an M.O.U. with Mount Rainier Athletic Club as soon as they move forward with you. We would love to get started. There is a grant that opens at the end of September we would like to apply for. And we would like to partner with the city. We would like to partner with the Muckleshoot Indian Tribe, as Doug mentioned. I do have a relationship with the Muckleshoot Tribe, and they are quite generous and very interested in moving forward with this project. Not just pickleball, but I think globally on the re property and recognizing the heritage and the culture and the history that the Muckshoots have on that property. So anyway, the tribe knows about it. They're excited about it, and they're anxious to move forward. For those of you who have worked with the Muckshoot Tribe in the past, they move quite slowly. So making some decisions and having the information in front of them, the sooner the better. Not pressuring you, I'm just letting you know, their council moves very, very slowly. And their processes, you know, are expensive. The courts that we would like to build are similar to the courts that are already built up on the Skagit Valley Community College property. And they have a 10-court covered facility that was fully donated by Mr. Blackburn, and it was done through a public-private partnership also. So these, again, these projects are possible, and they've already been built. That was completed last fall, and I believe that budget for that project was $1.6 million. So just so you know, and again, a public-private partnership and prevailing wage was used on that particular project. Anyway, I just am very excited to be able to move forward, to be able to partner with an entity that's going to hopefully establish and run a city's parks and r- have it open and available to be used by the public, but also available times for those who want to play and pay to play during timeframes. Anyway, I am available for questions.
But without getting too much into it. As an overview, this project over at Skagit Valley, do you know whether there are any overruns or any complications? Unforeseen?
They had a contingency. I think their contingency was 5%. I think they came in on budget. But one of the things that they did not, the way they designed the facility, they had, it was a 20-foot eve line, a 30-foot ridge line, and was 176 feet by 142 feet in the dimension of the facility. And they, Mr. Blackburn wanted it to still feel like it was outside. And so the top of the ports, the top 10 feet were covered around the top perimeter, and the bottom was left open. The problem with that is that wind, as we have wind on the plateau, it just rushed through that area, and the glare from the sun at certain times of the day created, you know, playing that was not conducive to pickleball. So especially if you're playing in undercover, which, I mean, it would be a huge draw, a covered facility. So they did not perceive the cost of accommodating for those factors. So they did put, they did have to go out and get more money and put up wind blocks, those kind of tennis things you see on the fences. And that helped with the sun, but it's still a problem. I've played up there a few times.
And would you have, last question. Would you ever have a time for the grant at the end of September?
Well, the grant doesn't, yeah, thank you. The grant doesn't even open for applications. I think it's September 29th. And I believe it closes November or something. I'm sorry, I don't have that exact date.
So we won't have to hear?
Well, no, because I can't apply for it until we have a signed M.O.U.
Thank you. All right, Councilmember McCray.
So you are the sentence that says, "No, you can add."
If there is an M.O.U. between you and M.R.A.C., I would sign an M.O., an M.O.U. with M.R.A.C. to build a facility on this property, yes.
I don't have any questions, but I just want to say thank you. I appreciate both of you coming forward and giving us this presentation. I'm a big supporter of it, and Buckley's loss is our main, thank you.
Ba-da-bang, ba-da-boom.
Those are my favorite words.
Yeah.
Really? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
All righty. So, um, let's see. That was, and Madam Court, that was our, when Ms. Dolph was got up to speak. That was our options, offset the recreation programs, or is that wrong?
No, thanks for that.
Okay. All right. Now we, we are moving on to our next presentation. And that would be Mr. Wells.
So, early on, I was working on the numbers for the next year, not necessarily planning a full-on presentation of how we can come up with funds to meet the cost of all of our expenses. So what I really have tonight are what we feel as a recreation department can do in the next year without the D.N.A. rep. So if we look back to 2018 and 2019, we had a cost recovery of 115% and 113% respectively. Then we hit our COVID years, which unfortunately with the government setting certain guidelines, the governor setting guidelines with how many students we have, we were at 45% of cost recovery and then 62%. And then currently, at the end of last year, we were at 80% of cost recovery. So we ended up with expenses at 1.26 million with a revenue of $1,032,000. So compare that number to the city of Maple Valley, which has the same service area that we serve with the school district. We're actually doing better than Maple Valley is right now and has had extensive recreation program. With their staff fees, they were at 89% last year at full cost recovery. So looking at next year, staff has done a whole bunch of number crunching, looking at all the programs that they run, what else could we run? For instance, Father Daughter Dance has always been a huge hit. We're looking to do a Halloween Bash this year. It'll be more of a family fun, trick-or-treat, costume sort of event. So we feel right now, and after talking with Ms. Ryerson, that next year, we're looking at approximately $785,000 for expenses and $637,000 for revenue. How much was the revenue? About $637,000, best estimate based on where our current prices are and our current enrollment spend. When we look at those numbers for next year, only real way to get to a full 100% cost recovery would be to raise our program fees 30% across the board. And with the cost of everything in our community going up, we have many of our families that they start in the recreation local programs, as that's a word. For instance, you look at U.S. Olympian Melanie Roach. She started in a recreational gymnastics program. So we have some ideas such as raising the prices a little bit here and there, not 30%. We want to still make this a portable program. Question then really comes back to what percentage do you find acceptable for us to be able to get back? Obviously, our goal is to get to 100%, but we're also just coming out of COVID too. Some of the business people are saying it could be five years before everybody fully recovers from COVID. So in our first year, as of July, we were at about 94% cost recovery. So what are your questions possibly?
My question, when we brought this program in from the school district-
The fall of '17.
'17. It was my understanding that the before and after of your program helped to before subsidize correctly. But if I'm understanding this correctly, in 2018, we said we were getting 110% to 117% on that. So I'm confused. Is that with the before and after of your program, or is that-
Correct.
That's with the after of your program?
Correct.
Okay. And now you're looking at 2023, $785,000, is that right?
So that's our projected for next year, the 785.
Correct. And then you recover 730 or 637?
Correct.
Without the-
Correct. And that's because three ladies behind me doing a lot of programming and making sure that the programs we're running, individual program is given its best opportunity for success. There's only a couple of programs, if you were to go back and look, that have made less than 15%. And those programs were ones that we needed to run because we had union staff and we had to keep working. And we still, because of that, were able to provide a service during certain school breaks that parents had a place to get their children to go to that had something more than just a round TV. So they would frequently have step-related activities at camp.
Question I have is, you're projecting $637,000 in revenue next year. What is the basis of that projection that subjected to evidence? Or I see you holding up something, but if you could explain it.
So the ladies down the rec department went through and looked at every single one of our programs. And based on current registration, adding a little bit, be conservative, predicting what we would have for next year based on every single program that we've offered in the last year.
And I know that's been affected by COVID, but you say we're on recovery from COVID. Do we have any numbers as far as increase in registration and from like 22 to 23, or anything?
In 2021, we had $670,000 as revenue. 2022, we've had $1,032,000 in revenue. And so far in 2023, as of the end of July, we were at $570,000.
Mr. Mayor, we have a question.
I have a question.
Sorry. When you say year, are you talking 2024, or are you talking calendar year from the time the agreement ends?
October year.
Okay. So what about the rest of this year?
That number would be very similar to next fall, which we're expecting a revenue of, next fall, we were anticipating $161,000 for all of our activities, including sponsorship. And there will be a certain amount of money, there's $12,500 that will be coming in from the school district, should be agreeing with the pass, that will help offset. And so I have $161 for next year, so it's going to be a little bit less than that. I don't, that number for this one.
Was possible to then, thousand, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, 36, 37, 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, 44, 45, 46, 47, 48, 49, 50, 51, 52, 53, 54, 55, 56, 57, 58, 59, 60, 61, 62, 63, 64, 65, 66, 67, 68, 69, 70, 71, 72, 73, 74, 75, 76, 77, 78, 79, 80, 81, 82, 83, 84, 85, 86, 87, 88, 89, 90, 91, 92, 93, 94, 95, 96, 97, 98, 99, 100.
Is the raise in 30% in order to have cost recovery of 100%?
Correct.
Okay. If, I guess my question then is, I have two. Do you have an example of what a 30% in the program, let's say soccer? And then my other question is, do you know what percent of families you know of that have a financial need and hardship? Because I'm curious, what percentage of families may, you know what I mean? Like, I think if you have some, like, for example, I have involved my kids in the rec program. I love the rec program, but we don't have a financial hardship like now in the month. So like, if we were to, you know, have some sort of 30% increase in fees, depending on what it would look like, or what it was to, what it could be. I'm just curious about that.
Currently, I don't believe we track any of the free lunch lunch programs for our kids.
Okay. Is that what it's based on?
Well, that's what, in our school district, we know we have a certain amount of schools that are highly on free lunch lunch.
Yeah.
So we're trying to keep the prices as low as possible.
Okay. So could there be, I guess my question, what I'm saying is, I was young, I was on free lunch. And so if I were one of the families that had to go in, my mom was a single mom, if we were to go in and try to do the program, like, is there, is there an ability to maybe tier that? Do you see what I'm saying? Like, where there, there are people who could then qualify, if they qualified for free and reduced lunch, they could qualify for a lower rate. Whereas there's other families that, you know, could then just pay whatever the standard rate would be to be able to, even if it's not 30%, but even if it was, you know, something that would just be able to recover a little bit more, like you were saying, although you did make a comparison of that too. So, I don't know. I'm just thinking.
All right, Councilmember McCray. So P.E. soccer, this year's like a six. So P.E. soccer, the 30% recovery is going to be like, okay, right? So how much is M.R.F.C.?
My son played it, played in the spring, it was 180 hours.
No economic, you will get one.
So I have a few questions here. When we do events, does that end up costing us more than we make on the event?
Events such as?
You mentioned the daddy-daughter dance and the Halloween thing.
It does not cost us more to run the program than what you pay us. So all of the revenue that we receive for father daughter covers everything we need to have.
Does it add anything or?
Yes, I'm looking for the number.
I guess my question, is it revenue neutral or are we, or is there?
It's revenue positive.
Okay. Now, you were saying this year or the last year with before and after school, we had one point two million in expenses, a million dollars in revenue. That's an eighty-three percent recovery rate. Saying without before and school, before and after school care, seven hundred eighty-five thousand in expenses, six hundred and thirty-seven in revenue. That's an eighty-one percent recovery. That's only a two percent difference. Now you throw in the school district's fifty thousand dollars, that's an eighty-seven percent recovery. We'd be making more money with the school district.
Thousand is not for next year. And also taking out a large sum of money because of both the staff and their benefits. While as we're looking at instead of operating with a staff core four, they're going to operate with three.
Right, but revenues to expenditures, your only loss of two percent recovery.
And what year, what year?
From whatever year you made one million and paid out one point two to what your estimated, estimate is for next year. Seven hundred thirty-seven thousand divided by seven hundred eighty-five thousand is eighty-one percent.
Correct. And in twenty twenty-two, it was eighty percent based on the hundred and two thousand we brought in, which was still, early portion of the year was still under COVID guidelines.
So really, when we were led by the school district at the time, that this was a a positive, the before and after school care was actually covering the cost, it wasn't covering significant amount.
I would say in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, it did cover a significant amount. Because we had two hundred thousand dollars in those two years pre-COVID.
But still, what was the recovery on those years?
One fifteen and one thirteen.
Okay. And, and time will tell if that would traditionally drop down and then the recession.
Unfortunately, we had the pandemic of COVID.
Yeah, yeah. Now, the other thing you mentioned was raising the rate of thirty percent, but you didn't mention raising the rate of sponsorship costs. I'm seeing here a fall sponsorship is now available where you can sponsor a team. You could potentially charge more for that too, so that that isn't a thirty percent offset, it could be a twenty percent or whatever the case may be. Just, just some other food thought, you know, we have a lot of different options here, but I, I'm not nearly as concerned as when I thought it was forty or fifty percent coverage of the parks and rec program was the before and after school care seems pretty negligible with, you know, differential with, without all the, the risk and everything that we need. I appreciate you putting these numbers. Third question. All right, customer swatting and then customer clients.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Wells. Because I, I heard at one point in time, numbers like, you know, it's basically costing, you know, four hundred and some odd thousand dollars more than what the program is bringing in. So where you guys, you guys were able to make a program so that it's only going to cost city, like I say, a hundred and fifty thousand.
Yes, so we're doing little things, including raising rates here, a little here, a little there, so it goes across the board. How we're writing the agreements with the different organizations. Some cities do a percentage before all of the bills are paid and some do it after. Going to go across the board, we take our thirty percent off the top instead of split the thirty seventy at the end after we pay all the bills. That's just a little bit more. And so those little cost savings across the board is what is helping us recover.
Are you like in an account kind of thing where it's easy to see, you know, because me, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to run something is fine, you know, that's. That's what it costs. That's, that's, I'm, I'm okay with that. But are we able to make sure that, you know, that that's what happens actually easily, counting world kind of thing? You know, there is a cost set because it.
I don't have any history. I don't have any of the information. I know David also, like you mentioned, was going to go from a core four to a core three. So that also includes reducing a staff member.
Yeah.
So that's saving.
But are we, you know, because it seems, wouldn't they have like a, an account?
You, you will be able to see it, you know.
Mars number associated with.
So when I send out your quarterlies, you'll see there's a recreation line, which is something you guys wanted back in twenty seventeen. So you'll see how much it's either forward or backwards. But I can't predict if he's going to get all the money. He's saying, you know, I can tell you what the expense side is going to be, but I don't know what his programming is, you know, I, I can tell you salaries for, for people.
Well, just like any other department, I suspect that we give a budget to, right? If we they're over their budget, they have to, or if they think they're going to go over their budget, they come to us and say, hey, we have a problem, we need to do this, or we can do this.
Well, the appropriate time to do that would be the budget amendment, which will be coming forward here in the next month, month and a half.
Yeah, so the number of constituents served is, can you give me that number?
Off the top of my head, no. Can you turn around here and see if they have any body, best estimate? For what? How many people we serve in the role?
Uniques? Well, now I take away V N A, put action day camp. Let's see. There, on uniques. Any year?
So the calculation I made is if you assume a sixty-five dollar a program fee, you come up with something like that. Is that helpful?
As unique, no. As participants across the board. So for instance, if a student signs up for eight weeks of action day camp, you're counting that would be eight people. So we could get close to that number based on, we're not counting the unique people registering. But realistically, if I mind, we do need to count if you sign up for soccer, basketball, after school tennis, theater, every time somebody signs up should be counted, even though it's not a unique. We keep everything on an Excel spreadsheet. So we could figure out how many people we have served. I think at one point in time, we did have those numbers and I could get those numbers again. But that's too much difficulty. I might be getting a tomato in the back of my head soon.
Yeah, my brain's a little. Yeah, don't show my home. You were talking again about the city of Maple Valley and how they have a fifty-nine percent cost recovery. Do you know how they're, what they're doing to recover their costs?
They're offering similar programs. They have a few programs that we don't have that we have looked into, seeing if we can run. But we're actually doing much better than them right now. So follow the model too much right now because we'll go backwards.
You were saying that they're, you know, with the eighty-two percent cost recovery, and I, I agree, I, I think that's really great. The hundred and fifty thousand, I understand, we were talking about thirty percent, but you had mentioned, you know, we already use P E football, for example. It's still comfortably or extremely, it's a lot lower than club sports anyway. And I just, even if we were to look at, we were to look at the entire populace of kids and say half of them were on free and reduced lunch, could increase the number, I think from eighty-two percent to even higher, which is already pretty good. So I don't know. I don't know if that's, I think that's.
We can certainly look at what price point we can go up to. That still makes it affordable compared to our competitors right around us.
Could you make, could you make like in, in the application process when people are registering, is there a way for, you know, a person to be, to be able to receive, you know, a lower rate? Through like a, if they're a part of the frame at least.
I think that would end up being a council decision to be able to offer a free and reduced program.
While still increasing costs or anything.
I know in the I L A, it specifically says we can't charge any more for any student. Now, now it doesn't say any less, but you could say if there's someone being charged less or also, it was supposed to be across the entire school district, a uniform now that maybe something we could alter into I L A with the school board, but.
Okay.
I, I recall seeing that one specifically in there because my question was, yeah, if, if, you know, someone outside of the school district or, you know, Pierce County or.
Yeah.
What, because I think there's already a price point between a school district, right? Yeah, school district student and a non-school student.
Yeah.
But I like the idea. It's like what we would do for water as well, you know, senior rate.
Oh, that's Martha Watson. I was wondering. And we did some kind of breakdown from you, what you, what you're showing there. Like you're throwing numbers out, I said, in front of you, but I'd like to actually see it, compare it to what you had in the past, what you, what you anticipate next year.
Yeah.
It might make a little more sense to us to go down and compare it because. Be nice if we could see that.
And customer, uh, let's go with customer.
And so I was trying to recall off the top of my head, the numbers that were run past us a few years ago when we were saying we weren't going to sign the agreement anymore. And it was like, the before and after care was like a hundred, was like eight hundred thousand that it was bringing in. The day camps were like, I think it was a hundred and seventy-three thousand. I couldn't remember if it was a hundred and seventy-three or if it was two hundred and forty. And then the sports were four hundred and twenty thousand. So if I'm doing the numbers, that's like five hundred and ninety-three thousand. But then this is, this bill that we have is saying that we're going to have to offset the cost revenues of four hundred and fifty thousand, but it appears that with all of the revenues that were brought in without the before and after care, we're still above that four hundred and fifty thousand. So I don't, I don't see where we're actually having a deficit bring with the revenues. So I'm just, I'm a little bit confused because I don't have the numbers in front of me, but that you're talking about, but I mean, it, it sounds like it's not going to be anywhere close to four hundred and fifty thousand that we're going to need to budget for on our amendment. So I think what I'm hearing is quite reasonable for any city, you know, every city kind of takes a little bit of a loss. Hopefully, we don't have to. But if we can, you know, raise some of the costs, I don't see why we couldn't continue with the program, which we're not putting out four hundred and fifty thousand. This, this seems reasonable. Do you, that make sense?
Yeah, correct. Initially, when we put out the four hundred and fifty, it had to do with the personnel costs at the time. Like I said, David has worked on reducing those. It sounds like he's also worked on coming up with a way to recover costs differently, to make that a much smaller delta. So it sounds like it'll be about a hundred and fifty is what he's saying for, for next year. I've sent him an email to try to get the numbers for the rest of twenty twenty-three, so I can put it in a budget amendment for you guys as well. And we'll definitely be keeping an eye on this.
Yeah, because this, this contract is only for one year, it looks like now, instead of the five-year contracts that we've had in the past. So I think that gives us some time to figure out, you know, we've got a whole year now where we're going to figure out what we're actually going to have to budget for as well as, you know, I don't, I don't know that the school would attribute any more after that, but hopefully with the fifty thousand that we're going to get, that would even offset the cost more. So it would be less that we would have to budget for.
He's actually already accounted for that in his numbers. We did talk a little bit about personnel costs and, and such, so I, I asked if he did already count for that. There are other issues if the I L A doesn't go forward, but we can address those at another time. Like a future I L A, not the current one. Potential field costs, that sort of thing. I, I do kind of need some direction and guidance if the hundred and fifty thousand feels acceptable to the council. I'm currently working on a budget amendment. There's no history of us running this program without before and after, and it's kind of hard, and I'm sure David would agree with you, with me on this, to separate a lot of these costs and a lot of these revenues, because it's not really how we've tracked things. So I don't know, you know, with confidence, how he feels with this hundred and fifty thousand number. If he's a hundred percent confident, fantastic, I'll, I'll go with those numbers. But if he's like, I'm seventy-five percent confident, I need to know that you guys are okay with using ending fund balance to support this program for the year until we know what the costs are going to be. Because when I bring forward a budget amendment, I don't, I, I'm supposed to only amend the budget in October in a biennial budget, you know, so that I'm bringing that forward in October, November for you guys. I don't really have the opportunity to continue to come back to you every month and say, okay, it actually is fifty thousand more off than what we, we felt. So I need to know your comfort level, David's comfort level with his numbers, so that I can move forward and say, okay, if you're telling me it's a hundred and fifty, I'm going to go with two hundred and fifty, so that I'm covered in a budget.
You mentioned your quarterly reports that you sent out. I'm looking at the one or Q two, sent out at the end of, or early July. The recreation line, and I'm starting to put in a spot here. We have a projected budgeted expenditure of one point four, but that's irrelevant to the actual expenditures were just over three hundred and the year to date. Oh, we're five hundred, okay. I'm sorry, I read the year to date as the revenues on that, not the expenditure.
I think, because I believe I just looked at that as well. I think through this second quarter, we were right around twenty thousand in the black is what I remember.
Okay.
But that included some revenues for programs that we hadn't expensed the salaries for yet. So.
Are we a little heavier on the second half here?
I, I imagine it will, because we had action day camp revenue come in, but we didn't have the salary. So there's essentially probably no revenue for July or August. I'm looking at David for some confirmation here.
So because of the not signed I L A, we have been very slow to take registrations for all programs. So.
Have you been getting a lot? Can you just drag the feet on them or?
No, we just have not been really advertising for our fall programs.
Okay.
Because Ryerson will say, when we had to cancel everything from COVID and give refunds, it was a horrible task that we had to look at paper, and we didn't want to have to worry about doing that. So in an effort to.
I wasn't part of that decision though. I, right, yeah.
So as part of not wanting to have to look through that process, we had been waiting for our fall programs until this.
But if we agreed, passed this agreement tonight, you guys are going to be full board tomorrow on marketing advertising, getting flyers out, all that kind of stuff, or later.
The registration brochure actually went on the, the website today.
Okay, I'm looking at it right now.
And then you can sign up your daughter to come and dance, not that.
What else would be in the site?
We typically will only do flyers to the different schools via electric page jar. Um, and in the past, the school district has occasionally sent out our summer recreation brochure for us. And then we can also make sure that, on social media, work on getting a list of past participants and serve some, yeah.
Okay, and, okay.
I'm confused because I know we have an agenda bill before, so that's the deal with the parts right now. I'm trying to, he can fight that with this presentation, right? So are we talking about his presentation or are we going to talk about the agenda bill? Are we talking about both at the same time? Because I, I would like to talk about the agenda bill. But I was trying to limit my discussion to the information that I've been given.
Well, what we'll do is once we're finishing this, and we do get to the, the citizen commentary, go to the point, get to the agenda bill. We're seeing, we will have a discussion.
So then I think we've been presented a few numbers. I think the council understands that. I don't think there's any more information we're going to get.
Right.
But he's going to stay, Mr. Wells will stay for the agenda bill discussion, and we can ask him specifics about the agenda bill at that time.
Yeah. Which is what I was getting to, okay?
I also wanted to, um, if I remember correctly, when we had all of the presentations from, uh, Wright's School, which is taking over the before and after school, uh, program. They did say that they were going to give a percentage of their profits to, um, the, to the, to the Parks and Rec program. Like it would be a small percentage, like ten percent or something like that.
Wright's School has a contract with the Sumner School District, and that cost sharing or that, that revenue sharing is with the school district, not with the city. They didn't, we did not sign any contract with them. So we're not entitled to anything from Wright's School. But the school district, that's one of the reasons why the school district in this ILA is, is providing that fifty thousand dollars, which if you remember way back, is about that, that cost sharing model that Wright's School felt that the school district would get. So in a sense, the school district is passing that through to the city via this ILA.
Okay, so that's part of, okay.
And council member, funds is correct, and we do need some commentary, any more questions? In there.
Uh, I, I want to follow up on that. I'm adhering to four hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred thousand. The wild, okay, we have this cost program and whatnot. You're saying we can basically do a four hundred and fifty thousand. So the cost, we're looking at a rather large. That's the numbers.
So.
I'm confused, I guess, as to which number is right.
The, the hundred and fifty thousand dollar is the difference between the revenue and expenses. So we're actually expecting expenses to be about seven hundred and eighty-five. And with Ms. Ryerson's numbers early on, the early model showed that we still had four full-time FTEs.
And I'm making three hundred fifty thousand.
Well, half my salary also comes in the recreation budget. So technically then we have five full-time FTEs plus all of the site directors, which were going to be five FTE in all of their benefits.
Half your salary comes from?
Correct. Um, when we acquired the Parks and Rec program, um, then City Administrator Morrison wanted half of David's salary to come from the Parks and Rec program, and half of it would be from the city's salary.
So.
Fifty percent of him is budgeted currently for recreation.
Half of David's.
Yes. Half of his salary comes out of the events budget and half of his salary comes out of the rec budget. All general fund activities.
And we will be, uh, moving on to the agenda bill, but we'll have more of this discussion. So.
Oh. One last question. And I don't recall, did we scratch the rent budget or the catalog?
We still have budgeted an amount there, but we have not been using that because the, my bottom line just has not come back out in printed form. So we've just been doing.
Why hasn't it? Budgeted, right?
Yes, we've been trying to conserve.
Have you noticed a different number since that hasn't been going out?
Okay, so, uh, let's move on to citizen commentary now. It is. Yes. All right, citizen green, now it's your time to address the council on city business. Uh, the city will now enable the video and microphone, uh, for attending this virtually. Uh, you'll need to turn on your video and microphones on your end if you're wanting to be seen or heard. Uh, we will start with those who are here in person and, uh, move to the virtual comments afterwards. You will have five minutes. Uh, please state your name and address with record, please.
Oh, well, I don't want to take your place. I'll wait for you.
Oh, we always have the standing ladies first.
I don't know if you want me tonight.
Uh, I'm, I'm not going to be very popular. I'm Becky Conway. I live on Lake Taps. Um, I would like to thank Mr. Wells and your heart for the children. I'm really appalled because you cannot make up to the kids what damage has been done to them over the last several years in any amount of money. So squabbling over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is really pissing me off. We don't concern ourselves with the loss of revenue in our city. Uh, I don't know that, I've, I've brought this up before. I don't know if our city is doing anything about, um, the retailers that are letting people walk out the door. Uh, we recovered that money and that's lost revenue. I don't know. I mean, we've tied the, the police department's hands. They can't pull people over. You can't give people a ticket for expired tabs. There's no incentive to be a good person. So give it to the kids. I have a granddaughter right now who's in a cat unexstate in her bedroom. Has been for several days. I have a grandson who's thankfully escaped being violated by Jake Jackson. And I want to know what this council knows about Jake Jackson and if you understand that we are about ready to lose our pants in a lawsuit from what the, the victims of Jake Jackson are going to get out of our Thunder Bunny Lake school board and out of our district. So stop squabbling over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If this man needs a hundred and fifty, three hundred, a million, give it to him and get these kids back into a state of mind where they can function and they can be happy. Now they have to worry about another pandemic coming and more masking. So they're, you're, you're setting them up in their future for depression before it's even happened because we've already destroyed them and they aren't, they have not recovered. So I think he's brilliant. A, a Halloween festival is brilliant. A daddy-daughter, uh, is brilliant. And we should have been doing this all along. This never should have happened in the first place. Never. So I'm pretty hot right now because you're not doing anything about lost revenue in our city. Nothing, nothing about the safety of the residents that are going into Safeway, that are surrounded by people that are just walking out with these kids walking out of Fred Meyer's with twelve packs underneath their coats. Come on, like do something about what we can do and give whatever we need to these children because you owe it to them. We screwed them up and this is a lifetime worth of damage. We have screwed up a generation of children. And you cannot pay them back for that. I wanted to bring up the, I, I'm going to be careful. I wanted to bring up the one and only time that I helped this community as a volunteer. I, along with many other people, went and cleaned up Bonnie Lake Elementary, which for some reason did not get attended to the grounds. I, like an idiot, was the only one who brought a trailer. My husband had to work, so I brought the trailer and at the end of the day, all the tools went into my trailer and I returned them to a city council member. I got my head taken off when I got to this person's house. I have never gotten an apology. I have never had anything said to me about the behavior of this council member after I had put my blood, sweat, tears along with many other people. So get it together, guys. I mean, this is, this is insane that we would not be focusing on the things that we need to focus on. And right now, you've got to give it a hundred percent to these kids because you took it away and we've got to give it back. If my daughter, if my granddaughter survives this, my grandson's fine. He's off and into Arizona, not coming back to the state of Washington. By the way, we've lost a hundred thousand residents, a hundred thousand voters in Pierce County in one year. One year. So figure that out, like what's happening around us. Anyway, I'm sorry. I really am sorry. Mr. Wells, I think you're wonderful. And I think Kathy that was speaking here earlier, I think she deserves a round of applause. I'm not really too concerned about the pickleball and soccer. I know that we have a philanthropist in this community that's giving his soccer fields away and he's not getting the support he needs from the city or the, our county. And he's letting everybody just come and play soccer on this field, like for him, right?
But no, that's not happening. So I'm buzzed out. Thank you.
Ms. Decker?
Thank you. Hi, I'm Laura Surratt. I work for the city of Bonnie Lake as a recreation coordinator. Um, Councilwoman Baldwin, excuse me, just wanted to address a little bit when you were talking about scholarships.
Yeah.
Um, historically, pre-2017, um, we had a scholarship fund that businesses or people could donate to. And if people just came and requested that, usually we would ask them that they at least covered the cost of a T-shirt. And then we would use that funding that we had in that account like that. When we came on board with the city, there's not an RCW for that type of, uh, program. So we have currently discontinued that and hope that we can revisit that at a later time so that we can justify that, you know, help out the community. Our office is located next to one of the, um, historically higher, uh, reduce, uh, through, reduce of free, uh, lunch, uh, schools. So we work with them. Um, one of the programs they have, we recover our cost, but for the after-school soccer, for example, that they'll lower the cost for the rest of their students. That's, so we get our share, just like we do for most of the schools, but we work with that. Um, you know, we were looking to do something, uh, some interior, uh, actually, they use the word, but pickleball. And we were going to open it to maybe some seniors and, um, hoping that we have like a senior hour for inside pickleball that maybe that would be a little bit less. And we haven't gone through all the ramifications on if we can or not. Um, most of the, uh, recreation departments in our area have gone to just online brochures. A lot of them are kind of also tossing around the idea, is that cost benefit? What can we do? But most are going to just online, um, format. Uh, and for some reason, several of the cities around us, because we coordinate with them, one of them being Maple Valley, because two of those, uh, staff members I know very well personally. They, um, everybody was a little bit delayed this year in putting out their brochures and stuff. Uh, we have had our flyers up for the last couple of weeks online. We are starting to see now that people are looking at the back-to-school type thing, that's historically when we all start getting flooded. We anticipate that in the next few weeks, we will be very much inundated with registrations and, and whatnot. Um, and talking about the TV soccer price, since that is a step for pre-kindergarten kids, we do like to keep that particular program prices lower because you're talking about three and four-year-olds and five and six. So we like to keep that as a little bit lower and, and the idea is to make it affordable. What we have done in the past so that we didn't have to raise our prices to, uh, we used to, about three or four years ago, pre-COVID, uh, we offered eight games. Well, instead of going for, for basketball, for example. So instead of making the cost higher to cover, um, staffing costs and things like all that goes with it, we have reduced the number of games so that our staffing cost goes down. But we are able to keep the price at a competitive rate for, and affordable for families because most of our families have children that come through our programs and we see them all, thankfully. And we have, um, council member Evans, we did increase our sponsorship rate this year. Uh, we do have a contract with Land of Frost that, um, we have to, uh, meet a certain amount of teens and that we get a guaranteed check every year kind of from them. Um, so that cost is kind of about the same for theirs, but for other fam, other companies and stuff, we have raised that. And then we give a little bit of a discount if they do more than one. Right? That's it. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Do we have anybody else who could?
I can't remember. Somebody pops up, don't they?
Council Mayor Dan Decker, a past council member. I live 20170th Street, East Pontiac, Michigan. First Amendment to the Constitution. The First Amendment to the Con, Federal Constitution protects liars. Federal government rejected the notion that lies must be protected by the First Amendment. The Supreme Court stated, lies are protected by the First Amendment. Lies are protected unless there is a legally noticed harm by a statement of an untrue nature which are harmful, such as fraud. Federal Government versus Supreme Court, February 2nd, 2023. What constitutes fraudulent misrepresentation? Four and six elements are generally required to prove the tort of fraudulent misrepresentation. Defendant must, is defendant made the false representation a lie? The misrepresentation is material to the transaction. The defendant made the misrepresentation with malice. The defendant made the misrepresentation with intention of inducing the other party to enter into a contract. The other party reasonably believed relied on the misrepresentation and defendant's lie was the proximate cause for the plaintiff's injury. First one, financial gain, fraud. I'm not going to read these next two hundred words to you guys because I'm going to wait and see if there is going to be a correction made or not on the fraud that I have seen in the past few weeks. Always going to speak on volumetric. And I am going to give a short thing on that, and that is, got my bill? Yep, volumetric, ninety-eight dollars. Uh, two and a half times my water bill for water. Uh, sure wish David King was not passed away because I'd like to face him, let him know what kind of an idiot he has turned the council into when I was on the council. Not tonight. You guys are pretty bright. I appreciate you. Point is, volumetric is brought to you people under a lie. Not supposed to be two and a half times the water bill for a two-month period. Uh, looks like the name. We all got fooled. We all got lied to. Sewer, water, volumetric. We pay a sewer bill, pay a water bill, then we pay a unreasonable volumetric water bill. Council, you're stealing money from the people from past elections voted on by past council. Yes, I was a member of that past council and again, apologize for my stupidity and ignorance at that particular moment in time. Yes, I was a member of that past council, and again, apologize for my stupidity and ignorance at that particular moment in time. If I had to do it over again, I would vote no, and I'd tell every council member, but kind of idiots. Well, I'd use stronger language than that. But the point is, volume metric, not, not irrational, reasonable way to steal money from people. Thank you very much.
All right. Do we have anybody else for the good of the order who's present?
Okay. Now we will start the commentary that is virtual. If you are virtual, you will have five minutes. Please state your name and address for the record, and please come on camera. Okay, since we only have two participants, I believe that's probably enough. So now, the city will disable all video and microphone for those who are attending virtually. And we will start with our committee report, or the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Finance Committee met this evening. We approved our minutes. We had a personnel update. Obviously, there's a lot of moving parts in the city currently. I think every council member has a copy of that update. We had a discussion on PB 23103 or 2163, the P schedule ordinance, which would essentially take it out of the code and cost less when it needs to be updated. It would still come back to the council, which would be easier and cost less for the city to actually update. That'll be coming into workshop on the fifth, and the council. Very good. We had, we had open committee, actually, we didn't have much to discuss. That was our meeting. We will meet again, like, two weeks from today, like, three weeks.
All right. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Carter. Community Development.
Mayor, we hope to meet next week.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Swatman. And now we move to Public Safety.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next Public Safety meeting will be held on Tuesday, September 12th, at 3:30 PM, on the second floor upstairs.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Evans. And now we will move to the Consent Agenda. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
All right. All in favor of adopting the Consent Agenda for August 22nd, 2023, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Let the record reflect that the Consent Agenda has been adopted unanimously. And now we do have a full council issue. Madam Court?
This is AB 2304, Resolution 3109. Council motion would be to authorize the mayor to sign an interlocal agreement with the Bonnie Lake Sumner School District to operate a city recreation program.
I'll move.
All right. Look what we're back to, council. Any discussion? Councilmember Swatman?
No, I would propose an amendment according to the wonderful financial news we got to. It's just the background summary, of course, I don't know if it's relevant or an actual amendment level, but it estimates the additional $550,000 or $450,000 to be required. I'm hearing that we could go with $150,000 in that area. Or do we have a second?
Sure.
Well, that's, I propose 150,000 if you want.
Okay, Councilmember.
I will amend his amendment to what our CFO's recommendation was at 250,000.
Okay. And I did hear a second, Councilmember Quinones, are you still seconding? All right. Let's have, now. How?
Vote on the amendment.
Right. No, no, I'm just, we're just figuring out how to phrase it. Ms. Robertson?
So, what's before the council is the amendment. The budget is just informational only in the Agenda Bill. So I believe, Ms. Riersen may let you know, but I believe that will come back as a budget amendment. My understanding is the reason that the budget information was on this agenda earlier is just so you would know, as background information going into the interlocal agreement, how much money would be needed at a later budget. Ms. Riersen?
So to be absolutely clear, our action tonight is simply to vote for the interlocal agreement that has been drafted and read, and read to the council.
Right. There's nothing in the interlocal agreement that addresses the budget impacts. That was just information only in the Agenda Bill. So if, following the vote on the interlocal agreement, if the council wants to put a motion on the table after the interlocal agreement has been voted on, to direct staff that, when they bring back the budget amendment, that 250,000, not 450,000, that would be in order, but it's not in order as an amendment to the interlocal agreement. It is not.
And Ms. Riersen, you're saying that the budget amendment will be in October?
You'll first see the budget amendment October 24th, I believe, at Finance Committee. And then I believe it's November, going off memory here, November 5th or 9th, at a workshop and for adoption at the end of the month in November. So yes, you will see that budget amendment coming forward in October, November. All right.
So how do we get the language correct in there, the background summary? Because of course, that's what the public is reading and everything, right?
I believe that would just be in your minutes. It would be productive, because the Agenda Bill was prepared for Mr. Wells's presentation. So as I said, if you wanted to make a motion following the vote on the interlocal agreement, that budget amendment should be no more than $250,000 to support the program. You certainly can't do that, give that direction. And then Ms. Riersen will bring back the budget amendment up to that number.
Councilwoman Watson?
Well, I'm concerned when it's first being afforded, those $450,000. I expect revenue loss in this one, but we've seen in the past how this affects so many students in schools, especially with softball and everyone, their involvement. And hopefully, there's a way we can cut back on students that can't afford it. And if we can get the dollars down, what we're talking about tonight, it would make more sense. And I would, I'd be for this going forward to it, so we can do it in the future. It shows their fine way to cut back. And hopefully, once they get to this next section of this north quarter, we see more savings or more increases to students participating. If off entirely, we're doing injustice to the citizens of Bonnie Lake.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Watson. Any questions, Councilmember Quinones?
Well, I have to ask, what happens if I don't vote for this? Well, this is my, I'm bringing the ILA, so I'll let David give him a pass on this one. So we expected this magical question. So what happens if this does not pass? The school district passed this last Wednesday, so their side has already signed off on this ILA. If the council chooses to not sign this by vote, nothing changes except for the fact that we do not have any use of Sumner School District facilities starting September 1st. So the plan would be that recreation staff would move from their current facility, which is at Under Miller Gym at a Sumner School, and they would be housed, most likely, at the Public Services Center. And we would have to drastically retool the programs that we offer, because we wouldn't have direct use of any of their facilities. I did speak with the school district in regards to this possibility. And they mentioned that it would still be possible to request, program by program, to use their facilities at possibly either a free or a reduced rental usage. But that would be us filling out, just like any other nonprofit, to use their facilities and be in line with every other nonprofit wanting to use a school district facility, which would be a very heavy take for our current rec staff to try and do that. Currently, they have direct access to the Sumner's facility registration system. So they can go in and directly program everything directly into the school district. That would cut off, so they would have to fill out basically PDF or paper forms for every program, if we were able to use their facilities after September 1st.
Oh, Madam Court, we had to be, with question. That will, that will speed things along. All right, Councilmember Baldwin?
So in this particular ILA, if we were to say yes to it, then does that mean that what you were saying, the wording that's in it, where it's every single kid has to have the same rate, is that what we'd be saying yes to as well?
It's, here, this is one of your IAs.
And, yes, Ms. Robertson, you would listen?
I believe the section that Deputy Mayor was referring to is Section 10, which is student fees.
That was the old Deputy Mayor.
Oh, sorry. I missed who asked the question. I apologize. Councilmember Baldwin. It says, "No district enrolled students regardless of location of their residence will be charged a recreation program surcharge." So it's, it was, we couldn't charge, for example, students who live in Sumner more than we could charge students who live in Bonnie Lake. There's nothing in the agreement that I'm aware of that would prohibit the city from having a reduced fee, as long as it was the same for all students regardless of where they live, if, you know, I to reintroduce lunch or their family households. It would not be prohibited in the agreement, is my understanding.
So then, so then, is there a way that we can create an amendment in the ILA?
No. I would say no, because they've already approved it of the school district. But it doesn't mean that you couldn't have a different program, fees that are lower, which is cannot charge a surcharge for some students and not others.
So the, yeah. The intent of Section 10 is basically the school district saying, hey, we're your partners. We want our students to get the same rate as just Bonnie Lake, City of Bonnie Lake residents. It's not, it's only meant to say, you know, if a Sumner's kid from this, our, this school district going to program, and a Bonnie Lake kid joins a program, it's the same price. You can't, you can't, for example, if a student that is coming from Derringer signs up for a class, we can charge that person more.
Yeah, because they're not.
Because they're, think of that, they're out of bounds, out of the school district bounds. But inside the bounds, we charge the same. I would be careful about the administrative overhead and the verification process that we're putting on rec staff, if you're trying to figure out who is entitled to a lower rate other than just accepting everyone's word.
To be absolutely clear with, that means we cannot charge any more than what we have in the ILA, but we can.
There are no fees in the ILA. It's just saying, across the board, the Sumner School District area, we charge the same amount as a Bonnie Lake resident. So if, if in our practice, we want to do.
That is not what they say. They say specifically that the recreation program's the surcharge, right? That's what they say, specifically, in the language, is my understanding. They don't say that you cannot charge somebody more in that area.
If they're outside the district area, we can charge more.
Right.
Yes.
And they don't say that you can't give a Bonnie Lake resident a discount. Resident, absolutely. Don't shake your hand at me. Where is that in the language?
It says, "No district enrolled students regardless of the location of their residence will be charged a recreation program." So if you charged a Sumner resident who is a student of the district more, that would be a surcharge.
That's not, I'm not charging them more. See, but I'm not suggesting we do that.
Yeah, this is the intent. I can tell you, I was.
There's intent, there's language, you know, it's either legal or not legal.
All right. That's how I read this. And can I just add one more thing? If the council desires at a future time to direct staff, bring back and reduce the program, we can do that, but that would be a, have to come from the council. That's outside the ILA.
That's.
So in my mind, if we don't vote for this ILA, then we will be paying 450,000, because we're going to not have access through the recs department for all of the school facilities. Therefore, we would have to step in line, and we would also have to pay for the school's use of, use of the school's facilities. So that would be detrimental, I think, if you don't.
And you'd lose the 50,000, and you'd have to add transportation costs, because the kids are already at the school, after school.
Just to, Councilmember Swatman, I'm looking at the registration right now, and it does have four boxes where you reside, in the school district bounds, city limits, outside city limits, outside of school district bounds, which is a $9 additional fee. In Derringer's district, $9. It is already set up.
And, yeah, so, I don't believe the council's had a chance to discuss this issue, either in a workshop or in a committee. So, and because of the Open Public Meetings Act, I think this is our one and only chance to discuss this. I believe because if we don't pass this tonight, the 1st of September is gonna be a disaster. So we're unfortunately being put in a bad position, right? So however we got put in this position, I'm not sure, but here we are. When it comes to, when it comes to this position, the way I read the interlocal agreement does not commit us to fault. And I think Sherry and legal counsel confirm that. It just commits us to an agreement, and that agreement gives us access to school district facilities, right? So I would support the agreement from that point. But I would, I did want to somehow say, you know, we need to even with the passionate public testimony. We do need to kind of bound, right? I mean, half a million dollars, maybe we want to spend half a million dollars, but I need a lot of data before I'm gonna spend half a million dollars on a bipartisan rec program, right? I need to know where it's going, who it goes to, right? What the programs are, what the value of the programs are to the community at half a million dollars. At $100,000, that's still kind of hard, right? But it is reasonable to say, we support that. That's in my mind. I'm just talking to you as a council. This is my only chance to do this. So, you know, when it comes to five times that amount, five times $100,000, now I want five times the information, capability to say, yeah, I'm gonna tax somebody that much more, provide partisan rec particular programs, right? And know that we're administering it in a very effective way. I don't feel like I got that much information tonight. I think we got good news. And thank you for that good news, that this commitment isn't gonna wind up in council paying half a million dollar bill, right? More than $100,000, maybe $200,000. So I look at this, bottom line is, it's my chance to talk to you as fellow council member. I think from a policy standpoint, it makes sense to pass the ILA. I also think it makes sense for us to have some sort of policy going forward of what the bounds for the partisan rec is, and what we make the liability rule. I can't do that, I'm not an expert. I'm gonna need a lot of help from Mr. Wells and Sherry to say what we can get reasonable given the city revenue. And the usage, I really need to know who's using it, right? Because there's, MRAC is out there, MRFC is out there. There's a lot of kids involved in club sports, and there's a lot of parents carding their kids around everywhere, including my grandkids tonight are getting carded someplace for that stuff. So there's a lot of people participating in things and paying for it. And it, I kind of want to know, you know, what the needs role is in helping those people. So I will support this with that background. And again, I think it's unfortunate that this is a last-minute thing, hasn't been through a committee, hasn't been through a workshop, and yet we get it. And I would like to not be put in that position.
So would your grandkids in the youth soccer. I thought it was you, councilman.
No, no, I, yeah, I, yeah, I have played youth soccer.
All right, Councilmember Watson?
I've always said in the past that, too bad it's not just a Bonnie Lake program. First, for the students in Sumner, which is important, we have, or themselves, we're paying for their, that's that city's students to hold these programs. Maybe in the future, we can look at this, how we can afford to make this a Bonnie Lake program and be a school district, use their facilities, make it work out in the long run. I don't know, because, it does drop off one, because if it's a Bonnie Lake program, a school district program, there's something in what we're dealing with. We haven't seen why we should be created for Sumner. I don't want those kids getting sucked into the kind of torrent in between. So someone like us look at it in the future, if we get through this.
We get through this first half of this one here.
I was just going to say, like, adding on to Councilmember McLeibens. Like, I think because this is only a one year ILA, what we need to do is as soon as we sign this, we need to start having, you know, every other month or month, once a month or whenever we decide at a workshop, we need to bring in the rec program because we don't know if we're going to get this ILA again or if we're going to have to do something, you know, revamp the whole entire thing and rework it. So, we've got a year now to figure out what we're going to do in the future. So, we've got, you know, it would be great if we could continue with, with being able to use the facilities of the school district. But what does that look like? And how can we keep this program going so that we don't have to negotiate it every single year from this point on? We need to figure out with Director Wells, we've got a year to figure out how we're going to sign another ILA or how we're going to keep this program either running or what we're going to do in the future. Because, you know, if we don't want it, then where's it going to go? What's going to happen to it? So, we've got to try to figure out this whole year. We need to be having conversations on how we're going to keep this going, how much it's going to cost, how we can keep the cost down. But also, if we're going to sign another ILA, then we need to have at least two discussions at a workshop to, you know, so that we're not stuck here doing something that we haven't read, you know? I read it like three times. I was like, okay, is this what we used to have? Is this new? I mean, I know it's new because now we've taken out the childcare. So, but has the wording changed that much? Because we don't have any lines drawn through, like, old contracts, old ILAs that we had in the past. So, I don't know what's new in here and what's old. And so, I would like to have that discussion so that we're not voting at the last minute. But I do feel that this is important, so.
That's a point well taken. Thank you, sir. Yeah, I agree. I think we need to move forward with this tonight. I would just say that there's one body that seems to be missing in this entire discussion. We have us, the City of Bonnie Lake, we have the school district. We don't have the City of Sumner. It seems like they should be involved, right? So, it seems like we're missing something. So, I would like in the future, we should reach out and see what they can provide with some of their kids and residents as well that are being supported by the school program. Well, Mr. McEwen, we did extend an invite multiple times. Did they respond or RSVP?
They were not interested in joining the initial discussion.
All right. Appreciate that. Okay, Councilmember Swat.
I think the history shows us that they had been involved previously. So, you know, the great partnership between cities and the other public organizations providing services for citizens around the area. I agree with Councilmember McClemon's there as well said. You know, clearly, this gives us access to the facilities, it's very needed. And it is, that's straightforward. Hopefully, in the future of the council, our administration can figure out how the cost and expenses can act more accurately. I can see that, I don't think that they're being really, it's real clear where all the costs are. So, I'm quite concerned about, you know, that. I'm not concerned at all that it costs a little bit of extra money to run these programs because there are many programs that the cities do, do cost some amount of money. You know, they provide value to the citizens, whatever it is. They're probably going to cost you money. Our most valuable services, of course, is law enforcement, and that doesn't cover costs. Parks and rec is also valuable. I will be definitely supporting this. I think it's a deal, it was a done deal at the beginning. The vote no on it thing is that the program ends, you have to plan that out, right? Kind of one of those issues that's not going to, not that's.
Thank you, Councilmember Swat. All right. And moving forward. Come on, we're all.
And I just want to make sure just to the council, like, my concern not, is not necessarily to just be able to offer a discount for free and reduce its effort to offset costs. It is to figure out how we can raise, you know, the cost to some families. Really, even with that, it's, the costs are still very good. And so, that's definitely my thought process behind that. And the last thing I did want to say is, it's actually to Councilmember Fullerton, when she had mentioned what she had said about Rite at School. I was definitely present during that meeting. And they did say that the city can receive like a nominal like cost. They did mention that. And that was why we were also very interested in what, presentation and what they had to say. They did say that. It wasn't just to the school district because we asked if it was to the district. And they had mentioned that the city also can benefit financially.
And that was when their understanding was that the city and the school district and Rite at School were joining together as a, you all signed the contract?
Not.
And the direction, my understanding of the direction from the council was, you don't want to be involved in foreign aftercare at all. So, school district, go and do your thing. But before an aftercare is not a prior, is not something that the city should be responsible.
All right. About a. Mr. Wells, I believe, has a comment.
Um, back to the father-daughter dance. Approximately 4,000 in revenue and 1,500 in expenses. So.
Do we have one every weekend?
Are you loaning us your house?
My daughter won't.
And when it comes to the overall expenses, every single item that we spend money on goes through a VAR's number that can be tracked. We don't specifically track if it went to Action Day Camp, went to Before and After, if it went to After School Soccer. That's where we don't track at the VAR's level what programs cost. But the rec staff have done an awesome job in creating this list of over 100 programs that we run annually with what it costs, what the revenue amount is, what our costs are to run that program specifically there, and then what our overall share of the program is after all the expenses.
As long as you're taking staff comments, I'm going to step up as well. Two comments. One, Councilmember Swatman, kind of piggyback off what David said. Recreation program is tracked through its own cost center. You get a quarterly report from me that says what the recreation revenues were and what the expenses are. What wasn't tracked and where we got it, 450,000, that kind of helped ease Mr. McLeibens' mind, was initially, we, as a finance department, unbeknownst to me, maybe David was tracking this. We were not tracking what programs were making what percentage of a profit. So, unbeknownst to that, you know, outside of information, I'm going to give you my true information, right? My true information is staffing costs were 450,000. You've asked him to come up with a presentation to let you know how we could offset those costs, which he has done. So, I'm taking him at his word and adding 100,000 in the budget limit to make sure that we can run this program. So, yeah, we are tracking those costs, that's fine.
I do want to call out Section 22, which is on page 19. It's the termination clause. It's due to funding limitations. And the city has the right to terminate the ILA if the city does not fund the program. So, we have an hour in case.
All right. We are ready to take it to a vote. However, I do have last comment. I do want to thank Mr. McEwen, Fullerton, for all of the work that they've done in the past year. And I most definitely want to thank our recreation program and everybody involved there for all of the hard work that you have done with all of these limitations and put this together for us to consider. Now, Councilmember McLeibens.
This obviously has nothing to do with anybody's work.
Right. Right, right. This is separate. Okay, very good. So, all in favor of Resolution 3109, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. That has been voted in unanimously. And the magic words now are seeing no more business. We are.
You've been waiting.
Oh, man.